Are we good? Joanne? Yeah. All set? All set? Nausprafield Town Council Meeting, March 3rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, if you can start us with prayer and pledge, please.
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Biragad? Mr. Christofaro?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Panchak?
Here.
Ms. Alves?
Here. Open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. There are two signup sheets, one for open forum and one for the public hearing. Has anyone signed up for open forum? Thank you.
You're putting it there now.
Eric? Yeah. J&amp;H Norving, Thai Spicy.
That's a licensee.
No. Alright. Alright, anyone like to sign up for open forum? You go ahead. Alright, anyone again for open forum? Nausprafield Town Council is sitting as Board of Licensing Transfer of Liquor License from YT Corporation DBA Thai 9 Restaurant to Thai Spicy LLC DBA Thai Spicy located at 175 Eddie Dowling Highway. Good evening, could you state your name?
Hi, my name is Ed Norving.
And your address?
Home address?
Mm-hmm.
Home address, 85 Moyn, Hon Sak, Rhode Island, 02895.
And you want to just give a little information about the restaurant?
Yes, well, we are taking over Thai 9, which is, I think, TY Corporation. Yeah, so we're doing transfer of all the permit and licensing to Thai Spicy. So it's basically Thai and Laotian food. It's a restaurant. So basically, we're doing almost the same thing. It's just a little bit different of the ingredients because Laotian, but it's similar.
Madam Clerk, is everything in order?
Sorry, can... We're waiting for the approval for the food business license. So if you could approve everything pending the documents we need for that, what we else have.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the transfer of a liquor license from YT Corporation doing business as Thai 9 Restaurant to Thai Spicy LLC located at 175 Eddie Dowling Highway, subject to the approval of the Rhode Island Department of Health Food Business License.
That's a motion as second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Thank you, you're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Discussion by council voter, other action on presentation by Maxwell Olson Eagle Scout Project. Good evening.
Hi, we're having some technical difficulties with the presentation that I have. Just keep going.
Just state your name and your address.
My name is Maxwell Olson, and I live at 2 Georgian Ave, 02896.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for granting me my time to present my Eagle Scout project tonight.
Thank you.
As I said, my name is Maxwell Olson, and I'm a Life Scout with Troop 1139. I have been involved in Boy Scouts for 11 years, and I am also a junior attending Davies Career Technical High School, studying electrical and renewable energy. By completing my Eagle Scout project, this will be one of my last steps to completing my Eagle. For my project, I will be working alongside the North Smithfield Heritage Association to create a kiosk at the Wannashoa Tucket Trailhead. North Smithfield's history is mainly centered around the mills, but a lot of our history is centered, is rooted in its nature. Many people are not aware of the hiking trails available in North Smithfield, let alone its, their historical significance. Along with creating awareness, along with creating awareness of the trail, a trail cleanup will be had to make the trail safer, cleaner, and to create a more enjoyable hiking experience. By completing this project, it will have allowed me to display my leadership skills that I have learned throughout my scouting career. So when I want to go look at the trailhead, there is no marker dedicated to the trail's existence. My plan is to create a kiosk to, to make, to make a kiosk with a map, legend, and trail information, so that people know that it's there. The kiosk will be modeled after the one at the Booth Pond Conservation Area at Park Ave. And like I said, along with the kiosk being made, we will have a trail cleanup there. My projected cost is, shouldn't exceed $1,000. The excess funds that I do have are going to go right back to the North Smithfield Heritage Association. The materials that I'll be needing are lumber or a composite material, concrete, plexiglass for a door, and certain hardware just to keep everything together. The funds that I will supply, that will supply the materials will be made from a bake sale or a car wash.
Yeah.
Workdays are the many requirements for an Eagle Scout project to be complete. For my project, I will only need around two or three workdays, an installation day or days, and a cleanup day. I expect, if approved, I expect my project to be complete by the end of June 2025. Again, I would like to thank the Town Council for awarding me time to come and speak about my Eagle Scout project. I would also like to thank Mr. Richard Keane and the North Smithfield Heritage Association for allowing me to collaborate with them to get my Eagle Scout project complete. Lastly, I would like to thank all the adult leadership, past and present, in my troop whose guidance led me here today. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations. Josh, are you all set?
Yeah, we didn't get, we never got, we couldn't get it from the computer.
Okay.
But it's basically covered everything that we were going to go over and, and that was in that slide.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't ask this my first time. Should, how do I ask this? Did I get a group?
We'll take a motion. Someone like to make a motion?
Project as presented.
We have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, discussion by council voter, other action on petition slash application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance pursuant to Rhode Island general laws 45-24-50 and 45-24-51, 45-24-53 as follows. Petition slash application for amendment to zoning ordinance filed by Pound Hill Realty LLC, 618 Grevel Road, Nausprafield, Rhode Island, 02896. The owner of the parcel of the land situated off Old Oxford Road, Pound Hill Road, and Pine Hill Road in the town of Nausprafield, more specifically described as Town of Nausprafield, Tax Assessor's Plat 7, Lot 38, consisting of 89.44 acres, subject property. And text amendment and zoning map amendment to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Nausprafield, the zoning ordinance. The proposed zoning amendment will create a new zoning district, industrial special management district one overlay. The intent of the district is to allow mining, quarrying, sand and gravel extraction, loom stripping, stone cutting operations, crushing, washing, and/or processing of materials. The zone map amendment proposes to amend the zoning designation of the parcel of land located at 14 Pine Hill Road in Nauspraf, in Town of Nauspraf, more specifically described as Assessor's Plat 7, Lot 38, the property, from rural agriculture RA to rural estate agriculture REA to industrial special management district one overlay.
Madam President? As an obiter to the Pound Hill Road Quarry, I need to recuse myself as a Town Councilor from discussion and decision.
Thank you. And this will be the continuation of the public hearing. However, we'll have the rest of the experts have their speech and information, and then we'll open it back up to the public. We will pass around a signup form, so if anyone wants to sign up, so we can have a list when we get to that point. Is Mr. Mancini here? I mean, Mr. Landry? Oh, yeah, and no votes will be taken tonight, just to let you know, this is still the public hearing, and if we don't finish tonight, we will extend or continue the public hearing to another night. We will stop the public hearing at nine o'clock tonight, so we can finish our other business, and if we need to continue, we will go to the next meeting.
Just a quick question. If we have questions, like we did last time, can we get up and ask questions while we're entertaining the presentation?
After they're done.
Like, after the public comment, after, like, you are...
After they're done, then we can ask questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. William Landry, representing the petitioner. You'll recall that at our last presentation, we again explained the critical components of the proposed zoning amendments and provided some discussion about potential conditions that would be associated with this rezoning, that would not create new uses here, but control the existing uses that are underway. We thought that it would be useful to present subject matter experts to focus on the most important impacts that seem to be of the greatest interest to the residents in the surrounding area, or certain of them. And we started off with water-related impacts, aquifer-related impacts, and presented our position through Bob Ferrari, and that consumed most of the evening the other night. I think tonight will be a little more compact. We had Richard Grohl, who was present, who was an industrial seismologist, prepared to discuss the issue of blasting, blasting impacts, how blasting is regulated on the property, and what the property's track record has been with respect to the impacts of blasting and what it's likely to be going forward as the use continues to expand. He has returned here tonight. He didn't get a chance to really present anything last time. We have a third expert who, whose focus is on particle dust, dust control, dust-related impacts. He was unable to be here tonight. He's had some surgery that's precluded him from being here, but he will be present at the planning board on March 13th, and we do expect him to be available at the boards, at the council's next meeting on the 17th. So tonight will be devoted to drainage and the impacts associated with that. I do have a report that Mr. Grohl prepared back in December of 2024 on the issue of blasting and its impacts with respect to structures in the area, the landfill interests, wells and so forth, and how the property stands up to the regulatory standards. This was not done for this series of hearings. It related more to responses to questions that the EPA had posed. I'd like to distribute a copy of that report, so that you have something in writing. Doesn't capture everything that Mr. Grohl will address, but it's a good summary of critical aspects of it. So if I may ask Mr. Grohl to come forward, it looks like we may have to share this microphone. Pardon me? I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. No, we're not going to go through, I have some extra copies of the report. I thought it would be better for Mr. Grohl to be able to explain what is in the report and answer questions on it. We're going to have to share this microphone, so we'll do the, we'll do the best we can. Oh, great. Very bottom, there's a little bit, flip it over. Okay. Alright, Mr. Grohl, I'm not, we're not going to do this like we would do in a courtroom setting, but I think it might be helpful if I introduce specific topics for you to address, if you would. I'd like to start off by having you introduce yourself to the folks that are present here and describe your educational background and your professional expertise.
Good evening. My name is Richard J. Grohl. I go by Rick Grohl. I'm an industrial seismologist. My company is Richard J. Grohl Technical Services out of Hollis, New Hampshire. I hold a bachelor's degree in geology and a master's degree in earth science, both from California University of Pennsylvania. I was awarded the bachelor's degree in 1986 and the master's degree in 1988. I have been employed as an industrial seismologist since 1989 and have worked continuously in that field since that time. I have been self-employed in the field since 1996. I perform seismic monitoring, pre-blast inspections, damage claim investigations, and public hearing testimony and court testimony on behalf of interests in the blasting and construction industry. I also have been accepted as an expert witness in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for issues of structural response and damage from surface mine blasting in residential structures, and have been accepted as an expert witness in the state of Rhode Island for issues of outdoor sound propagation. My master's research was in sedimentology and petroleum geology, and also I work in multiple states in New England, mostly in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, but also in Maine, Vermont, and New York, on occasion in Connecticut. But most of the work that I perform is in and around the Providence area. That's where most of my work activity is centered. I have been performing seismic monitoring at the site on Pound Hill since 2003, and the role that I serve there is to set up a seismograph at the closest structure prior to blasting, per Title 23, Chapter 28, dot 28, Section 9 of the Explosives Code in the state of Rhode Island, which is a code which enumerates limits for ground vibration and air overpressure. The ground vibration limits were co-opted directly out of the structural response and damage produced by ground vibration from surface mine blasting issued in 1980 by the former United States Bureau of Mines. It is the most comprehensively recognized document in the United States today for structural response and damage issues. This document was done as a research contract by a gentleman named David Siskin, and he is still to this day a recognized, most highly recognized expert in the subject. He actually established the limits and standards, which we still refer to today. What the findings in his studies that are published in his documents is that the occurrence of damage from vibration is something that happens simultaneous to vibratory activity. And there are multiple stages of what would cause damage from vibration that would be observed in a residential structure that are consistent from structure to structure and site to site. The research that was performed determined that the most sensitive of common construction materials is plaster on lath. And the, because the construction of plaster on lath is on freestanding walls, there is a frequency component of the limits that they establish for the response of plaster to vibration, and that chart that has been built or constructed is this chart here. And this chart here, it's a step graph. It has two regions. There's a region beneath the curve and a region above the curve. And what this graph is used for is when a blast takes place, energy passes through the ground. When the energy passes through the ground, after the energy is released from the explosive charges, there is an elastic response anywhere outside of the immediate fracturing of the rock. That's called the zone of elasticity. And what happens is that particles in the ground are pushed in one direction, then they are released, and they move in an opposite direction, back and forth, and they do so proportionately to the weight of explosives that are detonated at any given instant in a blast sequence. And the chart has, enumerates what the findings of the research were, that at lower frequencies, the vibration levels that would cause damage to plaster are substantially lower than at higher frequencies, and so therefore, there is a graduated limit. And that graduated limit is enumerated in the Rhode Island Title 23 Explosives Regulation. So that if you have a vibration that is of low frequency between 2.7 and 10 Hz, you are allowed .5 inch per second. Inch per second is particle velocity, peak particle velocity, and peak particle velocity is the fundamental descriptive expression for damage potential from vibration, ground vibration from blasting. The peak particle velocities limits as the frequencies become higher and higher, from 10 Hz up to 40 Hz. For each individual unit of frequency that is recorded in a vibration, there is an allowance for .05 inch per second greater peak particle velocity, up to two inches per second at 40 Hz and above. We're not allowed to go over two inches per second at any frequency, and the frequency limits cut off at 2.7 Hz because below that, you're basically measuring vibration in gelatinous materials, saturated gelatinous materials. And this work is all done in elastic materials such as hard rock and well-consolidated overburden, which is the loose soils and subsoils that you find between the surface and top bedrock. Other research that has been performed has determined that particle velocities of three inches per second will begin to, or if you expose materials to particle velocities three inches per second or greater, you can begin to precipitate damage from, or to ceramic tile, brick block class, things of that nature. It's independent of, the limit is independent of the type of masonry material, and the resistance of those materials is more centered around the fact that they're solid, more rigid, more massive materials. They're able to absorb greater strains than plaster.
Mr. Grohl?
Yes.
Could you put it more in layman's terms?
Yes. The most sensitive materials are plaster on lath. The second most sensitive materials are masonry, bonded masonries like bricks and ceramic tiles. The next most resistant materials are unreinforced poured concrete, limit which is four inches per second, and then reinforced concrete has a limit of 10 inches per second. And decomposed rock will generally start to fail around 25 inches per second, but competent concrete that is reinforced, that has no failures in it, pre-existing cracks or blemishes, will not fail till about 75 inches per second. And then there are the most resistant structures, which are water wells. Drilled wells either cased with steel through overburden into the top of bedrock, or concrete tiles that are placed down into overburden and allowed to recharge from overburden are resistant to at least 5.44 inches per second. And they, essentially, you cannot precipitate a level of vibration great enough to crack a water well, and those levels drop with distance below the surface. They attenuate five times with every doubling of distance you go below the ground surface, whereas at the ground surface, vibration naturally attenuates or drops three times with a doubling of distance across the surface. So water wells, pumps, and subsurface structures are extremely resistant to vibration, and essentially, you can't damage them unless you drill a hole next to them and blast in a manner that physically shoves the material that you're blasting into the structure itself. That's how resistant they are. You just basically have to drive and blast the structure to break.
Mr. Grohl, that, so what you're saying is that, as an industrial seismologist, are you the person that actually undertakes the testing to determine if these limits of disruption are at the regulatory thresholds or beyond?
Yes.
Alright, and just to draw it back, how long have you been doing that type of measurement work?
It'll be 36 years on April 1st.
And do you regularly interact with the government regulators that are responsible for supervising that and looking at the results that you come up with?
Yes, actually, every report goes to the regulatory authorities. In this case, it would be the State Fire Marshal's Office. Thomas Groff is the current recipient of the reports. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts goes to the State Fire Marshal's Office, and in any event, it goes to whoever the permit issuing authority is in the jurisdiction in which I'm working.
Alright, and approximately how many different quarries or similar operations are you involved in, in testing? or similar operations are you involved in, in testing and monitoring and following at any given time, on average, over the course of the last, say, 10 years or so?
I monitor nine quarries. They're all, for the most part, within 30 miles of here. Also, I monitor a multitude of construction sites and other operations.
All right, and as I understand it, the regulatory authority for blasting on a site like this one that we're here on tonight is the Rhode Island State Fire Marshal's Office, correct?
That is correct.
And that's the entity that's responsible for determining whether every blast is below or close to whatever the regulatory thresholds are, correct?
Yes, actually, the, once it goes to the State Fire Marshal's Office, it's out of my hands. They do what they do with it. I think they probably just assume everything's okay. I'd send the report over stating if there was anything that went over the limit or if there was, everything was within limits.
And if there's a situation where you're not anywhere near the limit, you still report what the movement was of the ground through measuring devices, record that, and provide that to the state?
Yes, both in absolute measurement terms, as far as particle velocity as a percentage of the limit, and that percentage of the limit.
All right, and you talked about structures, you talked about wells, and you talked about land masses that were not developed. Do I understand correctly that with seismograph monitoring devices placed strategically around a site, you can learn what the impact of a particular blast is on structures and look at the limits that relate to structures, wells, and look at the limits that relate to wells, and then other types of land masses like landfills here, and look at how that movement translates in relation to other similarly situated conditions, correct?
Yes.
All right, and how long have you been monitoring the precise blasting activities of this particular site?
I've been in there since 2003.
All right, and do I understand correctly that for the last 10 years or so, the test results for each blasting episode are electronically transmitted to the state?
Yes, I send them over on email.
All right, and you have, for all of the years back to 2003, before that, paper files registering the same thing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, these devices by which you determine what the impact of a particular blast is on houses, wells, landfills, that is measured through something called a seismograph, correct?
Yes.
Could you explain to us just what that device is? How many you have been following on this site? And exactly what that device does?
A blasting seismograph is a micro-processing construction seismograph that is designed specifically to measure vibrations that would occur in the natural range for seismic response from blasting. The seismograph contains two components. One is a transducer or a geophone. It is a small metal block that is about this thick and about this big around. And that gets buried three times the thickness of the sensor, below the ground surface and tamped into the soil. Or if we don't have suitable soil to work in, supposing it's too saturated or something of that nature, it can be glued to a concrete foundation or surface like a slab. That instrument, that component, what it does is it takes the universal motion that is produced by the passage of vibration, and it breaks it down into three mutually perpendicular components of motion. And the maximum of each of those three mutually perpendicular components is expressed in the form of particle velocity and frequency.
That's how much the earth is moving?
That is, it's the speed at which the particles are moving, which is the principal descriptor of damage potential from blast vibration.
All right, and tell us about how the seismographs have been placed over the years on this particular property and why?
Well, by regulation, I only have to put one at the closest structure. However, that is not how the spirit of this work is done. We're doing this for several different reasons. First and foremost, we have to demonstrate regulatory compliance. The regulations are at unity with the damage criteria that have been established by the former Bureau of Mines. And so that is the first thing that we have to do. The second thing that I do is we place instruments where I'm directed to place them, either because concerns were raised previously or there were new concerns, such as, say, before anybody did any work anywhere, one of these, one of these superfund sites were there, the fire marshal might say, "I don't only want you to set up at the closest house, I want you to set up on the superfund site." So we put an additional instrument on the superfund site. And then after a blast, somebody might call and say that they felt the blast. We get their name and phone number. We call them up before the next blasting offer to bring a seismograph by and set it there. Well, through about this process, I am now setting up anywhere from four to 10 seismographs per blast, also calling people and letting them know whether there's an instrument coming there or not, that there's going to be a blast, just so that they're aware, so they're not taken unawares by the suddenness of the motion itself. So after the blast takes place, the instruments are retrieved. All the information is downloaded onto a PC, and it is printed out and scanned and emailed to the quarry, the blasting contractor, and the state fire marshal.
Okay, and I'm interested in hearing more about the neighborhood engagement aspect of your job. How important is that? And just describe to me like the scope, as it relates to this particular site?
Well, it's very important to notify people ahead of time, because the regulations don't really require a very loud warning signal. I'm not sure what the distance is in Rhode Island, but I know in Massachusetts, it's 250 feet, you have to be able to hear a warning siren. And I don't think it's any different in Rhode Island. I haven't seen anything specific about the distance that you must be able to distinguish it. But it's, as long as somebody sounds a car siren or a sporting event siren, something of that nature, and the prescribed sequence that the sirens are to be sounded, which is three long, five minutes before a blast.
Can we go back?
Oh. Speak right into the mic.
Yes, it's three, three long, five minutes before the blast, two short, a minute before the blast, and one long, a minute after the blast. Then, once that is done, the instruments are recovered. They see us placing out these instruments. They all are notified. And what this does is it prevents a certain amount of fright being caused by people not expecting it. They're not hearing that siren more than a couple hundred feet away. So we want to make sure that if anybody that might be home, and we develop that knowledge by people who call, people we see around the neighborhood, people that have inquired about having a seismograph. That way, we let as many of them know as possible, so that if they don't hear those warning sirens, which sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, it depends on topography and atmospheric conditions, they are still aware that there's going to be a blast.
So you've spoken to many people in this group multiple times over the years, correct?
Yes.
You have a list of calls that you make every time there's a blasting episode?
Yes.
And engage people and make sure there are no surprises, that people know exactly what's going to happen, correct?
Yes.
And is full transparency about what's being done and when and so forth, correct?
That's correct.
And the state gets all of the results?
That's correct.
Now, I, did you want to finish your answer as to where the seismographs have been placed on this, on this site?
Is this one here? The nearest seismographs currently have been at 1563 Pound Hill Road, 1899 Pound Hill Road, 7 and 10 Pine Hill Road. And if they're blasting at this end of the site, we were until recently setting instruments up at the landfill to the northeast. And if they're blasting at this end of the site, we place a seismograph on the side of the landfill to the west. And then also, instruments are placed throughout the neighborhood where people may have heard and felt vibrations recently or in the past, and they wish to be notified and have an instrument there to determine that they are indeed staying within their regulatory limits and in compliance with their regulatory limits. So we set one over on Old Oxford Road, 219 Old Oxford. We're setting one at 1543 Pound Hill Road. And also, two, Dory Court, 52 Douglas Pike in Burlville. It's 62, I think it is, Douglas Pike. We were setting up at 1770 Pound Hill Road. Yes. Yes? Oh, yes, I was, you have the chicken, you have the chicken, the little coops in the back? I've been to your home before. When I would come to your house and knock on the door, and I would place the seismograph in your yard, a few times I set it up on the left-hand side of the house, we spoke. We just put it there long enough for the blast to take place. The seismograph is triggered. We install the seismograph into the ground, then it's turned on, and it waits for a preset trigger threshold to be exceeded. Then it records for a period of seconds after that triggering to capture both the ground vibration that triggered it and the air overpressure, which travels much more slowly and takes about one second per thousand feet longer to get to that location than the ground vibration took. So after that, we come back, we retrieve the seismographs, and we proceed with the downloading and the processing and sending the records off to the appropriate parties.
Now, how, oh, jeez. Well, if I may, Madam President.
Could we just wait for questions till they're done? And then we'll open it up for questions?
Very happy to answer your questions, but just maybe we'll answer, he may answer them before he's finished. But if not, we will absolutely get back to everybody. How many blasting episodes are there per year on average at this particular site?
About 12.
So about once, once a month on average, correct?
On average.
And the blast lasts, how long?
The blast sequence, all of the holes are timed individually, and the entire sequence from the first to the last hole is about 600 milliseconds or less.
How many seconds is that?
Six tenths of a second.
All right, so that's six tenths of a second for the blasting, right?
For the blast ground vibration and the delay sequence. And then for each thousand feet away that a person might be, an observer might be from the blast, there is a one-second delay between the time that the ground vibration reaches them and the air pressure reaches them. So the air pressure effect at distance is actually what they're most likely to hear and feel, as opposed to the ground vibration, which dissipates very quickly in a very short distance.
Okay, so you're talking about milliseconds for the blasting sequences. So if there are 12 a year, we're looking at something less than 20 seconds a year of blasting, correct?
That's correct.
Now, with respect to a blast, there are some folks that have described a white cloud that they observe in the distance following a blast. Can you explain to us what is comprised in that, and what they're looking at?
When you see a blast take place, what you're seeing is a very rapid conversion of solid to gas in the explosion process. And the fundamental combustion products of the explosives is water vapor, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, and some NOx gases, meaning there is a series of nitrous oxide-type gases that are produced in the combustion process. Over 50% of the combustion product, though, is water vapor.
So it truly is a cloud, correct?
Yeah, it's actually a cloud. And when you see the white cloud, principally what you're seeing is the reflection of sunlight off of water vapor, which is just like a cloud in the sky. That's why they are white when they are subjected to direct sunlight. And it's the same in the blast cloud.
Same composition?
Yes.
But there is some particulate matter as well, correct?
Yes.
And generally, how far does the particulate matter extend?
Well, the particulate matter drops out of suspension in the air very quickly, because it simply has, it does not have wings, it does not have any buoyancy whatsoever to it. So the, with the exception of the finest particles, most of that material drops to the floor. You see, when they're blasting, they're blasting from the edge of the pit into the middle of the pit. And so what happens is that they cast that material down into the center of the site. So it has to transit from the center of the site off to the sides to leave the property. So what happens is that the only thing that can get across the property line is stuff that can manage to stay buoyant that distance, which is several hundred feet. And that's kind of an inescapable consequence of all, of all energy.
So for this, for this site, the blasting is from the edges of the property toward the middle, not toward the outside of the property itself, correct?
Yes, and in mining, that's very common. That's the way that mining is performed.
All right, now, with respect to the results of the testing that have occurred over the year, do I understand correctly that you've got results as recently as 2023 and 2024, correct?
Yes, I still monitor there to this day.
All right, and you can, you've been able to tell where the blasting patterns on this property in terms of movement, movement per second, how that operates with respect to structures, wells, and the landfill?
Yes.
Okay, and could you just, I know that much of this is in your report, but to put a little more flavor on it, as it relates to structures, do I understand correctly that the portion of the structure that you're trying to capture is the one that is the most susceptible to some type of disturbance?
Yes, we place the seismograph on the side of the home that faces the worksite wherever possible. Sometimes it's not possible, but we do so wherever possible. And we measure within 10 feet of the foundation. Preferably, we set the seismograph right next to the foundation, because this document was generated, on page 30, it says that the original measurements were taken one foot below the ground surface, next to the foundation of the house that was of interest.
All right, and these standards for impacts are designed to tell you what your blast has translated into in terms of an impact on the plaster on lathe in the house. into in terms of an impact on, uh, the plaster-on-lath in the house, correct?
That's correct.
And that's like the most fragile, if you will, uh, house, housing component. And that's why it's, that's, that standard is, is used as a very relevant, uh, barometer, correct?
Yes. Plaster-on-lath is bonded to a freestanding wood frame. All of these materials are very light and have low mass and have a relatively high response compared to more rigid elastic materials like masonry, concrete and, uh, rock.
Okay. So, which means it, it would crack more easily, most easily.
Most easily, yes.
But there are different standards for, for what, what a vibration would result in for, uh, tri-wall or wood or masonry, correct?
That is correct.
Much, much more tolerance is obviously expected for those types of materials.
Yes. Uh, if you stay below the plaster standard, it would preclude any form of damage to any more resistant materials.
All right. And your written report that I made reference to earlier and that I'm gonna ask you to describe, you took the results of the blasting on this site and, and expressed what they show in terms of movement and how that would relate to, uh, that standard for potentially causing damage to plaster-on-lath, correct?
That's correct.
And you did the same thing with respect to how that would translate into an impact on somebody's well.
That is correct.
And you did the same thing with respect to how that would translate to an impact on the landfill for, as a result of that particular blast.
That is correct.
And this is for all of the blasts, correct?
Yes, I examined all of the data.
Okay. And in your report, you actually have a value for movement of earth in the landfill, movement of earth next to residential structures, movement of earth in other, in other places, wherever the seismograph was, was placed.
Yes.
And you show how it compares to what the standard is for concrete and all of the other various building materials as well as wells and, and, uh, and ground like such as exists at the, uh, constitute is similar to the landfill, right?
Yes.
And could you just, and you can use the report or use my copy of the report, but could you tell us how the scorecard looks for the blasts on this site and those different values of barometers that we, we've just described?
Yes, uh, the landfills, the highest vibration that we've had so far is, uh, 44% of what would cause damage to plaster. Um, and any of the materials in the landfill, be it the contents of the landfill, the, uh, cover of the landfill, whether it be the rubber liner or the soil on top of it, or any of the apartment, uh, materials like steel pipe, PVC pipe, um, concrete chambers, anything of that nature, um, they are all below 1%.
They're all 1%.
Or less.
In fact, it was one, your, your report indicates that the settlement measured from the compaction of landfill contents is measured in feet. The vibrations recorded at both landfills, that's Wilson landfill and the Weston Sand and Gravel, correct?
Yes.
Seismographs, uh, that associated with particle displacements, back and forth motions that were approximately the thickness of a human hair. Did I read that correctly?
That's correct.
Right. That was the extent of the displacement of the, of the earth?
That's what the measured displacements are. They're usually either in low frequencies, they can be as great as, uh, point zero three inch displacement. And in the higher frequencies, you're allowed, uh, to point zero zero eight inch.
All right. And how does that, uh, correspond to, have you monitored over the years, the, the end, the five-year reviews that the EPA performs of the landfill, uh, and how it describes how the integrity of the landfill and its design, uh, compaction has, has survived the, the five years?
Yes, actually, the EPA goes into these landfills every five years and they scrutinize the condition of the covers and the surrounding ground surface. And the purpose of doing this is to determine whether or not there is any undue stress, either man-made or environmental on the landfill that would compromise its sanitary conditions. And they have written on their reports that the landfills have had nothing out of the ordinary in the way of maintenance issues for the surface. And those that they've had, they were not out of the realm of the unexpected. They actually, that's one of the reasons that they do these examinations every five years and that the, uh, landfills are actually performing at or better than they were designed to perform as far as mitigation for future pollution.
Okay. And those, that's the current state of the, of the
And the most recent, done last year, five-year review, they, that was their conclusion.
Okay. And could you tell us a little bit about, uh, the impact on, uh, on, on wells, how they compare to that standard?
Uh, well, water wells and drilled wells, uh, are extremely resistant to vibration simply because you have a steel casing that I think is a quarter or three-eighths inches in thickness, uh, descended down through the top of the, the ground surface and through overburden, meaning the soft, unconsolidated surface mineral matter into a pocket drilled 10 to 15 feet deep into the top of bedrock. That is then sealed against the top of bedrock with what's known as a drive shoe, which is a chisel, donut-shaped chisel that screws onto the end of the casing, is shoved down into the top of the rock and then they backfill it with either drill cuttings or drill cuttings mixed with cement. Then they take a six-inch bit and run it down through that casing to drill out the six-inch bore beneath that is uncased in bedrock beneath. And a solid elastic material like rock that is drilled circularly, if you press on it from the sides, from any direction, it cannot implode because all of the material is forcing the material adjacent to each, each particle of material in the medium from sliding past it. It's, it's not just hard material, it's enfranchised material. It is solid material. There are fractures that the bore, um, encounters where it's drilled through the rock, but as far as the rock itself, the rock can't cave in, so to speak, by being pushed on because it is in perfect compression. It's a perfect circle. And the steel casing above it is also in perfect compression. It's held from the surroundings, the surrounding soils on all sides so that it can't displace or deform in one direction or another. That makes the water well the single most resistant structure on a property to vibration. Doug wells that have the reinforced concrete casings are the same way. They're extremely resistant to vibration because you cannot force one side or the other of the material in on itself into the open annular space in the center of it because it is being forced against solid rigid materials to either side in a, in a manner that they can't push past each other. They're pushing, being pushed into a smaller concentric, um, space within the well bore itself. And that's what makes the bore so incredibly resistant to motion.
Right. And in your report, you talk about a study, uh, that was done, uh, that, that is, is used to make reference to the gravity of blasting and its impacts on wells. Uh, and you made reference to the point one one inch per second, uh, peak particle velocity here. And that compares to 2% of the maximum observed ground motion, uh, in that study, meaning we're, we're like at 2% of the tolerance, if you will, associated with that, with, with the wells.
That's correct.
All right. So you got, you, okay. And then you did the same thing, uh, with respect to how the, the motion observed in the, uh, seismograph correlates to the, uh, movement of plaster-on-lath and, and what percentage it, it is of the regulatory tolerances for, uh, disruption or, or vibration, I guess.
Yes.
And how, how did this, this site fare on that standard?
Uh, well, actually I couldn't find any exceedances. Uh, the vibrations that I've monitored over the last 20 years, they have kept in their regulatory limits and they have done so because it's done by design.
And, and most of them are much, much lower than the regulatory limits.
That's correct.
On, on the order of 22% or 1%
Yes.
Of the regulatory limits.
Yes.
And that's been consistent over all the time that you've been observing the blasting at this particular site?
Yes.
And you're the only one that's done, done the testing results. So you have command of the entire record of virtually all of the blasting on this site back to 2003?
Yes.
Right through
May I ask a question? Were you present on December 30th of 2024 when they blasted?
Yes.
And you have a report for that day?
Uh, not in hand, but yeah, there was one set. I can pull it up on my phone because it's electronically transmitted.
I'd be interested to see some of the numbers from that blast because I felt it three miles away.
Well, if you were feeling it three miles away, in all likelihood, what you felt was air overpressure. Uh, ground vibration will not travel that distance simply because of viscous dissipation. You see, what's, what's taking place in the ground is that as the particles in the earth are oscillating in a myriad of different directions as the kinetic energy passes by, what takes place is that there is a small amount of heat dissipated between each point of particle friction. That heat reduces the amount of energy available to agitate the subsequent particles. That's the first thing that happens. The second thing that happens is you're taking a hole with an explosive charge in it that is maybe three to four inches in diameter, and you are distributing the energy from that hole in a broader and broad concentric plane across the surface of the earth and with depth down into the earth. And what this does is it breaks the vibration down just by sheer stretching, so to speak, at a, uh, rate that is, um, not linear, but rather is exponential. So that across the surface, there is a threefold decay in vibration with a doubling of distance. Whereas air overpressure, and oh, by the way, ground vibration in hard rock most commonly travels at fairly high vibration frequencies. Those higher frequencies are intended in the blast design to keep these, the vibration above local structural resonance so that the homes that are nearby freestanding are not being wrapped excessively in whole mo, whole structure motions by matching the natural period of the whole structure. Air pressure, on the other hand, is completely different. It is a, uh, fluid-born pressure pulse that is subject to wind inversions, temperature, um, and topography. And sometimes you can have a blast event that is not all that large, uh, you can force, you can focus the energy from it in one direction or another, 30% more in one direction and deplete 30% in the opposite direction. So yes, you most certainly could have felt a blast that was three miles away, but it would not have been from the ground motion. And the air overpressure, uh, would not cause damage to any component of your home or any materials in your home, um, that ground vibration would affect. The only thing that a, uh, that a home would suffer damage from air overpressure would be plate glass. And the level of vibrate, or sound that it takes to crack plate glass is 133 decibels in linear channel we measure it with.
So if my windows didn't shake, why did my dishes shake?
Because they're loose and freestanding. They're, if they're sitting on, either on flat like this, they're just sitting, um, uh, able to shake like that if they're on, and they're even less stable if they're on edge and can move back and forth. The structure might have still had a small amount of response at that distance, either from the air pressure or the ground vibration, most likely, almost certainly from air pressure at three miles. Uh, but, and you won't feel the structure itself move, but the energy is still passing through the structure and loose objects within the structure can still reverberate at their own natural period.
So I've been in the house for five years. Why on that one occasion would I have felt it and never felt anything before on a blast day?
Uh, would probably be proximity and size of blast and the, um, disposition of the throw of the blast.
The house didn't move though.
No, no, no.
So how does proximity factor?
Because they work in a transient manner around the perimeter of the site. You see, they don't blast every blast in the same spot, but rather it moves around the circumference of the pit. And every blast is different because once you blast away the rock, A, you're changing what the mass of that particular location is, and B, that rock's no longer there, so you're going to have to move over. The angle of incidence between the, uh, delay sequence that they propagate in the rock to get the rock to heave and break is going to be different than it was than the previous blast.
Is it safe to say though that the houses closer to the flurry on that day would have experienced higher particle velocities?
It's entirely possible that they would have, yes.
Wow. Okay. That's kind of what I was trying to get to. What were our
Is, is there any regulatory limit associated with air, air-over impacts that you've described?
Yes, the limit is 133 decibels, uh, and which is equal to a peak air overpressure of point zero one two nine PSI. Uh, this is a political spec. There was very little of any reason to consider that this was an actual damage specification. Uh, they found some questionable, uh, changes in unrestrained glass in the study and they decided to make that a limit. But realistically, you don't start damaging windows until you get around 140 to 142 dB, which is about point zero three PSI.
Okay. So, so if I understand your testimony correctly, there's been no exceedance of any regulatory limit with respect to this site? And in fact, there have been no results that are even close to a regulatory limit on the bl, on the blasting.
That's correct.
All right. So let me shift the discussion now to, uh, a different topic. You're aware that there is a berm that is proposed for this site, correct?
Yes.
And that discussions are underway or, or will be underway and, uh, as to how that berm should be constituted, how high it should be, uh, where exactly it should be located and what its components, uh, should be, whether it be a, a wall or, or vegetation. Do I understand correctly that through this monitoring that you've described, where every blast, no matter where it occurs on the site, is recorded, as the blasting activity proceeds uh, toward, uh, residential properties, toward the landfill in, in any direction, let's talk about the residential properties because that was the real purpose of the berm. You, with, if all of these results are reported to the state and to the town, which is part of this zoning amendment, that all of these, these standards get reported, uh, do I understand correctly that there's a, a tremendous opportunity for early identification of patterns and how close, what kind of cushion you have between your results and any potential regulatory limit as you move in any direction with the blasting?
Well, that's one of the reasons that I scatter so many instruments out is because it's highly useful information to the blasting contractor. It actually enhances the performance of their product and that's why they recommend me to their clients, which is how I ended up with nine pits.
So if you were required to assist in a plan, uh, an annual plan and projection for where the blasting is likely to occur over the next year, and followed that up with test, the most recent testing results and then testing results as the blasts occur roughly monthly, you'd have an indicator of, of how long it might be before you didn't have such a great big great big cushion between you and the regulatory limits?
Well, actually, yeah, I could do that once a year. The blaster does that with every shot. They are very, very strictly regulated. They are, and it's a very competitive industry. These guys scrutinize everything that they're doing, everything I give them, and we speak and we discuss, you know, how things went as far as vibration after every blast.
So let's say that there was an area of the site, say maybe around the entrance to the site, where there's less than 50 feet available. There may be areas that are older portions of the site where the buffering is not as practical. As you get close to those areas, what would be required to be done to make sure that the blasting has, still has a very large cushion between the results and any type of regulatory limit?
That's done through what's known as a propagation equation. And the blaster actually does a propagation equation. Now, it used to do it longhand. Now they have a series of programs that does it automatically on the computer, and they can distinguish at any point, anywhere on the site, what level of, or what weight of explosive could be safely detonated and not create a level of vibration that would exceed the strain failure characteristics of the closest structure and any of the materials within that structure.
And those are very conservative standards.
That's correct.
So if the site were a planned site in that respect, where this type of monitoring, blast by blast, predicting the future, was required to be completely transparent, not just at the state level where it is, but at the local level where the neighbors would be aware of it, the locations of the seismometers, boards, the building official, everybody's aware of it, that's a desirable outcome, I take it, to be able to measure impacts and gauge how effective the berm is in that process and when it might, when if at all it might be necessary to supplement that berm or make it higher?
Well, a berm would only really have any effect on air over pressure and sound, and it would shield visual things. But as far as where the berm were to be placed, that has to be determined kind of at the, you know, on the ground. You have to take the elevations of the receivers, the elevations of the sources, and then you can project what sounds you can expect at that distance. But that's from stationary equipment or equipment that is working in a relatively small path of transit. As far as blasts are concerned, blast vibrations aren't really affected by berms, the ground vibrations, and the air pressure that comes off of a blast would be the least, the kind of sound, low frequency sound, which would be least affected by a berm. But the blasting contractor must regulate the berm in a manner that, or regulate the blast in a manner that does not exceed the threshold limit for damage to windows in any event. And realistically, being that there's very little in the way of receptors to the north of the site, and all of the blasting is performed in a manner that the materials are either heaved to the north or to the east or to the west as opposed to the south where most of the occupants are, the sound that would come off the back of it, the berm would cut it down more, but you already have relatively low sound propagation in that direction simply because you're behind the blast, the throw of the blast is in the opposite direction.
Okay, so the berm is, will be a function, a function not just of the blasting, but also the activity on the sites, trucks, backup alarms?
Yes, that's more what berms are intended to mitigate.
But in any event, you do have the ability to control the timing of the blast, the size of the blast, the charge associated with the blast if you were ever required to work in an area that could be closer to not having as big a cushion from the regulatory limits?
That is correct. The blaster has wide latitude in how he designs a blast. I've seen blasts that have six-inch diameter holes that are 100 feet deep, and I've seen blasts where they take a piece of what's called jackhammer powder, they cut it with an X-acto knife into little pieces, they stick the piece of dynamite on the tip of a blasting cap and wrap it with electrical tape, and they put that in a hole, and it's on a separate delay from an identical charge that's separated by what's known as a stone deck between the bottom of the hole and the middle of the hole, and then they do another one at the top of the hole so that they can blast in places like elevator shafts in the basements of buildings. They did one that I did an inspection for over in Fall River, and everybody's seen this building because you can't miss it if you're coming off 24 North onto 195 East. It's the big granite mill building that is right up against the road there. And I had to inspect that building because they were putting an elevator shaft in the basement. And I've also had to do the, it's now Bali Fitness, I believe, in Worcester, where they also blasted for a swimming pool in the basement of that building. It was an old, I think, an old Leachmere.
But that's all a question of planning the maximum charge.
Right.
In relation to what your surroundings are.
You can make a blast as big or small, you can direct the energy to the most distant receptor so that you have a greater distance for that threefold decay of energy to take place. There's a multitude of variables that the blaster can play with, and now they have some very, very sophisticated gadgets, such as the programs that will allow them to blast design ahead of time electronically and also electronic blasting caps, which are programmed. And these blasting caps are now pretty much universally used amongst all the quarries because they're extremely accurate and they produce a very consistent result that allow you to reduce the weight of explosives it takes to break a cubic yard of rock. And they're extremely expensive, but just to give you an idea of what makes it worth it, electronic blasting cap costs about $50, a conventional blasting cap costs about $7, and all of the blasters went over to electronics. So it made it worth their while, just the accuracy of the products.
And the ability to plan the blasting.
And the ability to computer plan a blast. This is no longer Denver pile driving by with in a rusted Dodge whipping a stick of dynamite out the window. This is, this is a very, very strictly regulated, very safe and scientific process that has an enormous body of research performed by just about every interest you can imagine in the world with it.
I think that's all the questions I have for you. Madam President, I think maybe a good time for him to take questions.
Do we have the sign sheet? Does anyone have the sign sheet?
Mr. Bro, while they're doing that, I got a quick question.
Yes.
Is it possible to do, to get out of two little blasts the same as you get out of two big blasts, I mean, out of one big blast?
Well, actually, what dictates the vibration and earth response is the weight of explosive detonated within any given instant within a blast sequence. Two holes which were initiated in a pattern of holes drilled into rock in a bench that are timed more than eight milliseconds apart from each other produce two distinct pulses of vibration in the ground as opposed to a single amplified pulse. The reason that this is done is that rock is very strong in compression and it's very weak in tension on a factor of 10 to 15 times. So if you drill, say that your table is the rock that you're going to blast, and your first hole is here, your second hole is here, your third hole is here, your fourth hole is here, you're going to time this hole to go first because this is the open face, and this rock is least confined and it's most weathered, so it's going to break the easiest. They put the smallest charge in that hole first, then the hole or holes behind it get charged in the sequence second, third, fourth, so on, so that the rock breaks back very quickly. It's like, take the speed with which the rock breaks through these holes in the sequence is on the order of taking your thumb and running it over the edge of a deck of cards. Every one of those cards running past your thumb is a different hole initiating, and that's kind of what it sounds like if you watch a blast, a conventional blast. The electronic blasts are much faster because the caps are much more accurate, they can get the times down to about one and a half milliseconds between holes and still produce two distinct pulses of vibration in the rock. And that sounds more like a motor when you hear it. It's a whole sequence, it's a whole train of explosive charges going off at once. They don't let two holes, or if they do let two holes go off in a sequence, they're at opposite ends of the blast, and what they've done is they've propagated it from the center of the blast, like say, this was all the rock right here, they would start the first hole here, push this rock out, and then they would hatch it, bring it back, and your last two holes would be that corner and that corner. And those would be most confined, and what they do is they sequence the holes in such a way that there isn't a damming up of energy within the sequence, but instead at some point, there's a little bit of a breather that the material in the front can be pushed out, and that allows enough space for the stuff in the back that's more confined to be heaved into the space that was created previously in the first half of the sequence.
All right, so we're going to open up to questions. If we can please keep it to five minutes per person, and we'll let you know when you're up, just because we have quite a list here. And then if we run out of time, we will be coming back to our next meeting. First one is Cheryl Marandola. Can we do questions first? Can we do questions first, and we'll come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Lee Angellet.
Is this for questions for either?
One second. All right. Make a motion to open the public hearing or reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Lee.
Is this questions just for tonight, or can these questions go back to things from Mr. Landry from the last presentation?
Do you have your other expert in still?
I know he's not here, but... Oh, he is here, sorry. My first question is, do the seismographs at all of the locations that you stated earlier, do they all get reported or just the ones that are above limits or below limits? And are all of them that you stated are out in all of the residential areas, every blast or just some?
I said as many as I can. I have nine pits, and my clients kind of have a sick sense of humor where my schedule is concerned, and they all call me at the same time and send me into different directions. So when I don't have multiple blasts to do in a day, I stick out as many as I've got. And if I have multiple blasts, then I have to split them up, and I just call people and explain that it's not a good day to bring an instrument to their house if they're more distant to the blast site. Not on every, no.
Okay, thank you. You also mentioned that the buffers protect the sound. So the fact that the four, I don't know where to go, make it stop tweaking. The fact that the four most recent forested acres have been raised in the tree buffer along the southern border of the property, it's gone, but down on the southern side, those trees are also starting to be raised. So is it safe to say that the homes along those areas are going to have larger impact when it comes to the noise level that you were referring to and when you were talking to Mr. Panchak?
It's unlikely, and the reason that it is is because they're down in a hole. They're also surrounded by soft earth, there's sand, and so the sounds are kind of absorbed. It's also a very irregular topography down there. You will be able to see it, and because you can possibly see it, if you can perceive what you are already perceiving and you see it at the same time, your perception might be that it sounds more loud than it did before, but in all likelihood, it would not change the sound pressure levels simply because there is a pretty good distance and still a lot of what we call ground effect, which is the resistance of sound to propagate over irregular soft ground.
So then, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that contradicts what you said to Mr. Panchak. He was three miles away, and you said it was because of the air. If the air, if the buffer's being removed, then that air travel is going to be closer.
Well, we were discussing a different subject there. When I was talking about the sound from a blast, that is a highly directional motion of sound. A berm isn't being put up and trees being taken down are going to have no effect on blast sound. That is going to have more effect on stationary or local transient sound like trucks, crushers, things of that nature. And it's not going to have much of an effect there simply because they're concentrated in an area which is largely shielded by features on site, such as sand embankments and topography.
Okay, thank you. And my last question for you is, are you yourself installing what is being used when blasting, or is it an outside company that's coming in and doing that?
No, I do not blast. I am simply a seismologist. The blasting contractor is a licensed and insured contractor that is highly specialized in just blasting. Very few companies both have construction divisions and blasting, they just, they've all gone to just either being blasting companies or construction companies. And the reason being is that blasting is a very, very expensive and involved, highly specialized trade. It's not taken lightly. It's apprentice, you have to be tested, and you have to cross all your Ts and dot all your Is for every piece of paperwork you do when you're a blaster. It's very strictly regulated.
Okay, thank you. My other questions for last week's presenter, do you want me to wait for them?
Yeah, we can just get through these. Thank you. Can you just leave it right on the screen? Thanks. Mike Rapko? Five minutes, Mike, please.
Mike Rapko, 250 Greenville Road. Even though the house faces Greenville Road with all these sand and gravel trucks, we did experience all the blasting from Waterbury Hill, and even though you're a mile away, it's a disaster. It's not comfortable. It doesn't matter how far you are from the blasting sites, you're going to feel discomfort, and it's unfortunate, and you have to live with it. And the question I have is, can this site keep operating under a residential zone without even changing to an industrial zone? Are there restrictions by continue to operate in a residential zone for what's going on right now? Or do you have to go to an industrial to go into blasting and quarrying and stone removal? I mean, are there restrictions between residential and industrial? Okay, can one answer the question?
Thanks. Yeah, we tried to explain this at the last couple of hearings, I'll do it briefly. The quarrying operation is not... The quarrying operation is not a permitted use in any zone in the town right now. However, under the state law, pre-existing non-conforming uses are allowed to continue. And mining uses are unique in that they are allowed expansion rights that other uses don't have. And the reason for that is that by definition, a grandfathered mining operation, by definition, is always expanding. Every next blast, every next bucket of material is an expansion from what existed the day before. So by not permitting expansion, you're taking away a lawful, non-conforming use that was underway before there were zoning restrictions against it. So to answer your question, we're not saying it's a permitted use. We're saying it's a grandfathered, non-conforming use. But it's not one that requires reporting, testing, planning, burming, fencing, buffering. And what we're proposing is to plan the future expansion of the non-conforming use on this lot by building in controls on how far it can go and how it is to be monitored, and to make sure that there are no adverse impacts on people's houses, on their wells, or on the landfill. So that's why it's a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to go from unplanned, continued, non-conforming use to planned, continued, non-conforming use that supplies some level of certainty and transparency for both the landowner and for the municipality. That's the purpose of the proposed amendment.
Yeah, I brought that up because before I came to the meeting, I looked at the town of Blackstone, and there's a lot of quarrying and sand and gravel. And there's a big distinction between operating in a residential zone and an industrial zone in Blackstone. And there's plenty of restrictions when you keep this operation in the residential zone because of the oversight and the paperwork. And they also have a fee, which is very strange. It's 25 cents per cubic yard for granite, sand and gravel that's removed when it's in the residential zone. I didn't have a chance to see what it is in the industrial zone. So it's just a comfort zone that if your operation could continue without the quarrying and the mining, without expanding into the things that you can't do right now, I think a lot of the audience would be a lot more comfortable if you stayed in just sand and gravel instead of going into mining and quarrying. It's a, it's not a comfort zone. I think most people that live in the area are not comfortable with all the blasting. And if you look at that site, the way the wind flows from the northwest and the northeast, all that blasting and all that debris that flows in the air, it's all going to flow to the south of the site. So the people that live south of that, so I don't know if they're going to be putting up more solar panels or what they're going to be doing. But if you start creating more debris in the air and it's flowing to the south of that site, how are you going to address that issue of the debris that you're getting from blasting that it's going to affect the south of that site?
Well, I think as Mr. Grove explained, there's minimal actual particulate matter that moves off the site. The site is very highly regulated, particularly given its proximity to the landfill, water quality, air quality. These are all metrics that can be monitored. No one's looking for a variance that would permit pollution or anything else. We're within regulatory limits for blasting in every respect with a huge cushion. And the activity on this site that's grandfathered includes rock removal, crushing, all of the operations that historically took place there. So we have grandfather rights, and there will be mining on this site. The question we pose is, is it going to be to the, and it's one lot. It's one lot from zoning, for zoning purposes. The zoning ordinance has required this to be considered as one 89-acre lot. For the last 70 years, it's operated really without any local control. So the choice is to either continue to do that and not have any real parameters. There's been 30 years of litigation that really hasn't clarified the rights, any aspect of the rights associated with this. The operation has continued without any local oversight. And the whole structure of this amendment, if you read it, is to allow what's happening there today, but to allow it in a controlled, planned way that creates a new transparency that never existed. And that creates some controls, particularly when it comes to buffering from the residential areas. So that's our preference for the future of the site. The town has to decide what its preference is. Is it business as usual, which is, you know, not ideal for us or for the town, where you just, you know, we ought to have a planned solution here that we think is superior and should be attractive to the town. And that's, and what we're trying to do at this level is to describe how we're doing on the impact issues. Last time was all about water. The water is drinking water quality here. You know, people were concerned about wells being contaminated and contaminants from the landfill entering this site. And that was dispelled, I believe respectfully, by Mr. Ferrari, who's here again tonight to talk about those impacts. And we've got someone who's going to be at the planning board and at the council at its next meeting, who spent his career at the Bureau of Mine Safety and is an expert on the dust, dust controls and protocols that can help make sure we don't have an issue with particles that are in the air. So we're working on these impacts one at a time, trying to advocate that a planned approach to this property is the better way to go than simply grandfather rights that aren't well thought out.
Mr. Rapko, we need to move on. Can I go on to the next person?
Yep. One last question.
Can you come back? It's been like 10 minutes. Can I?
Thank you very much.
Patty Griffin.
I did have a statement, but I was wondering if this is just questions right now? Well, I do have just a question, and then I can allow other questions, and then read my statement if this is time permitting.
Sure. Can you just?
Yep. My name is Patty Griffin. I live at 351 Mattity Road. And my question is for Mr. Landry. It's my understanding, where did he get to? Oh, there we are. It's my understanding that in June 1979, the quarry had 15 months to sign a certificate of compliance, but they didn't. So how are they able to continue talking about grandfather rights?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. I heard something that Mr. Richards said about some allegation as to a certificate of compliance that I don't believe is accurate at all, probably the most charitable way to describe it. There was no certificate of compliance that was required. Either you're grandfathered or you're not grandfathered. It doesn't require anybody to create a certificate. This property's a grandfathered use, has been for many years. There are all kinds of zoning requirements that may be applicable now. There are certificates of completeness for applications. There are zoning certificates. There are different types of certificates that are available, but they're not all available to uses that predated zoning.
So maybe it's worth looking into then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, it's not.
If you're not aware of it, is it worth looking into to see if there was such a thing back in the day?
No, it wouldn't have mattered. If a use is grandfathered, it's grandfathered. You're not required, there was no requirement when it was in this use to have any type of certificate. So there's no, there was no requirement for that at the time the uses became grandfathered. You can impose all kinds of new regulations as you go along through the decades, but this was not required during the years in which these uses were being carried out on the property.
So what are they grandfathered for? Is it just sand and gravel? Or is it actual mining? Because they weren't mining back then.
Yes, they were. There was rock being removed from this site. The activities associated with the quarry.
Blasting?
Doesn't matter how you do the blasting. This was a site that was used for the commercial removal and extraction of materials from the site, sand and components of sand for decades. It's been operating that way without interruption for decades and decades and decades and decades. And it doesn't go in the same box as if someone is trying to open a new quarry.
Okay, so you are saying that back then, they were not blasting? There was a lot of words that followed your answer.
I don't know what blasting they did or what methods they used to remove and crush rock back then. As I stand here right now, I don't know.
Okay.
But blasting, whatever, the technology changes over time, there's an awful lot done in the mining industry that's different now than it was 70 years ago. The same is in the restaurant business and the same is in any other business. It's grandfathered. If a restaurant is grandfathered and they're using a microwave that they might not have been using in the 50s, it doesn't take their grandfathered status away from them. The technology is allowed to develop and to adopt modern mechanisms for removing rock, crushing rock, and transporting rock on and off a site, just like any other business that's grandfathered, is allowed to evolve. In many cases, legal requirements require different processes. The equipments are very different right now than it was back at the time. I can imagine that hammering rock was probably a lot louder and longer than the blasting.
I can't. I've never heard anybody hammer a rock from where I live, so.
Well, you might have if you were there in the 50s and 60s.
Yeah.
So I don't want to get into an argument with you.
Not arguing.
There's no question that there are grandfathered rights associated with this property. So I don't think we're talking about something that's been debated.
Okay. I'm going to wait for my statement because I think that we're running out of time again. But I do have one that either this night or another one.
Thank you. Beth Newberry. Oh, is it up?
Yep.
Is it she owns? Five minutes?
Yes. Okay. Hopefully you can hear me like this, and hopefully it doesn't squeal. Cheryl Marandola, 1780 Pound Hill Road. Thank you for letting me speak. This is relevant to the direction the conversation went. Okay, we won't do that. So Cheryl Marandola, 1780 Pound Hill Road. The information contained in this presentation represents a layman's interpretation of the December 2023 summary judgment, North Smithfield Public Town Documents, North Smithfield Town Ordinances, as, well, we won't go over the EPA and D E M reports. So a zoning ordinance was adopted by the North Smithfield Town Council in June of 79. Per the ordinance, existing earth mining operations were able to continue as non-conforming as long as the property being mined was acquired prior to the 1979 ordinance, not sold to another party, and not expanded. Per zoning code, owners of the non-conforming uses are required to apply for a certificate of compliance within 15 months. Next slide, please. Given the 15-month timeline, the application for a certificate of compliance was required to be filed by mid-November of 1980. No application was filed. Additionally, the operation was expanded in 1987 via the purchase of a 62-acre plot of land, which is where the blasting is currently taking place. In 2013, the quarry was sold to Pound Hill Realty LLC via a quitclaim deed for $1.3 million, which again would have ended non-conforming use status. Another four acres was purchased in 2021 for buffer purposes only, although trees were raised along the 200-foot buffer property in the summer of '24. Sorry, CJ, next slide. The town actually made efforts to stop mining on the abutting 32-acre lot beginning in 1990. In May of 1990, zoning inspector Bob Benoit was made aware that earth removal operations were taking place and served a cease and desist. In June of 1990, the town council ordered Leonard Pezza to restore the 32-acre lot. In May of 1991, Bob Benoit again issued correspondence to Leonard Pezza to cease all excavating activities on the 32-acre lot. Again, in November of 1998 and November of 2004, Bob Benoit sent cease and desist letters regarding quarrying on the 32-acre lot. And 2004, Bob Benoit reiterated that the existing non-conforming uses cannot be extended to the 32-acre lot purchased post-1979. Next slide, please. Throughout this same time period, the Pezzas responded to the town's actions to enforce protections and halt mining in a variety of ways. In 1991, they pursued road use litigation, and a temporary restraining order was issued in response to the town's request for the quarry to hire flaggers to coordinate drivers and trucks. In 1992, my favorite, they applied for a certificate of zoning compliance for a horse farm, stating that they would need to remove 450,000 cubic yards of earth to build that horse farm. The application was denied. In 1999, they sought declaratory relief and joining the town. Okay, happy to do that. In 1999, they sought declaratory relief and joining the town from prohibiting earth removal. The town did not respond to that complaint. In 2001, they amended both the road use and land use complaints. The court granted injunction of relief. A hearing was scheduled. The hearing date passed without input from the town or plaintiff. In 2004, the Pezzas filed for a temporary restraining order due to the cease and desist issued in November. The court ordered the status quo to remain in effect. The zoning board then scheduled five hearings for the cease and desist appeal. These meetings were never attended by the Pezzas, and the last meeting was scheduled for November 8, 2006. Thank you. As noting, the ordinance, yes, I'm sorry, one more slide, CJ. As noted, the existing ordinance states that no non-conforming use shall be maintained, renewed, changed, or extended until a certificate of zoning compliance shall have been issued by the zoning official. In 1987, the. In 1987, the 32 acres was purchased. In 2012, a scale-and-scale house installed. Also in 2012, a concrete foundation poured for a processing plant, which was later installed in 2014. In 2021, an additional four-acre lot was purchased. And in 2024, an electrical shed was added to the property. A certificate of compliance was not pursued for any of these actions. So I would say, based on my layman's interpretation, this very much qualifies as an expansion of the property, not necessarily just the equivalent of taking another bucket of earth. Thank you. Bethany Barry?
Good evening. Bethany Barry, 53 Follett Street. My concern for this issue, as with others in the room I'm sure, is the environmental impact of the quarry being sandwiched between two superfund sites and existing over an aquifer that really has to be protected. So going back to the creation of the superfund program in 1980, chemical waste was being dumped without care for the surrounding environment in many areas. And the disaster at Love Canal where about 950 families were evacuated from a 10-block radius was the impetus for the US government to pass the law. The law authorizes two kinds of response actions. One, short-term removals, where actions may be taken to address releases or threatened releases requiring prompt response. Number two, long-term remedial response actions that permanently and significantly reduce the dangers associated with release or threats of releases of hazardous substances that are serious but not immediately life-threatening. I do want to point out that all evening, Mr. Landry has been referring to the site as a landfill. And I'd like to ask that we be intellectually honest. It is not just a normal landfill. This is a site where toxic waste has been and has been remediated. So Western Sand and Gravel, which has been widely discussed during the overlay request, is one such superfund site. And as such is required to have a five-year review done by the EPA, which was mentioned earlier. And looking over the most recent review, which is dated on the EPA website, is 9/21/23. It is concerning that all of the abutters and community members interviewed expressed quite a bit of concern for the fugitive dust that the quarry requesting the overlay is producing. The EPA noted despite many attempts to contact the town in North Smithfield, no response to the EPA's inquiries were returned. There also seems to be some concern about illegal dumping that had been done where the quarry now sits that was being looked into by the EPA. This all to say that while Mr. Landry, Mr. Grohl, and Mr. Ferrari have been resolute in assuring us that there is no adverse environmental impact in relation to the fugitive dust, the aquifer that the quarry sits over, or negatively impacting the superfund sites due to blasting between these two sites, the responsibility of the council lies with protecting the citizens and the environment. While I don't doubt that Mr. Grohl and Mr. Ferrari's expertise in this area are wonderful, an expert retained by material sand should not be the expert advising the council on this matter. I'd like, I'd like to urge the council to vet and hire experts with no political, personal, or economic ties to the town or to the owners of the quarry to give an opinion and for that to be billed as material sand. Thank you for your consideration.
Ann Lily?
Hi, I'm Ann Lily. I live on Maple Avenue in Forestale, which some of you may know abuts a superfund site. And Forestale is a thriving, happy community in which Scott Gigs lives because we have town water. And we got town water because of the superfund site. When Mr. Landry was laying out the big picture for us with his map, he spent a lot of time talking about how environmentally compromised the area was. He painted a very bleak picture of the area. And he went so far as to say that the land that the quarry is on has no other use. He presented a dichotomy of either we have housing or we have a quarry. That's a very limited viewpoint, I think. Because having lived next to superfund site, I know it can be much more than that. As far as well use, I know in Forestale, you don't have to go very far from the superfund site to find housing that uses wells. Go to the top of Maple Avenue and you will find houses on wells. You go down School Street near the little red schoolhouse, you will find houses with wells. So for them to say there's no well water available on that site, I think is probably a little short-sighted. Perhaps there are some limitations. To say that there's no utilities at all is amazing because they have electricity at the quarry and that's a utility. The houses that are on Pound Hill Road all have electricity and they have septic and well water. There could be very many useful things used with that property. I see this as kind of a salesmanship. I see this as a salesman selling us a story. A story that I find, I don't know. It's like you're bringing your car into the car dealership as a trade-in and they're not going to give you blue book value on that prop, on your car, just like they're running down what this property could have been. I just find, you know, this whole long story that goes on and on and on about the grandfather rights, just another sales story. They're selling this idea of this grandfather. And the more I hear about this grandfather, I keep thinking, who is this grandfather? He never dies. He crawls up out of the grave and he consumes land. He's kind of like a white walker. He never dies. The only thing I can ask this town council to do is to hold the door.
Carol? Would you want to speak?
My main concern are the superfund sites. The air, the silica in the air. But I listened tonight about the superfund sites and I hear, well, there has been no damage or very little damage. And with that, I guess the request is, let's go forward. Let's keep blasting. Let's see if we can keep these superfund sites intact. Forty years ago, EPA came in and the superfund sites saved the town. Their control over them and their monitoring of them has kept us safe. And this is 40 years into decades of cleanup. We can't let those 40 years go for naught. We have to keep going on this. And I would say that we don't take a chance and keep blasting and see if we do salvage them. So that's my concern because 40 years ago, I was part of a citizens group that worked very hard to close those. And we fought for three years. And if we had, if those sites hadn't been closed, just think about it. Where would Sladeville be now? We would have, they planned to continue. They planned to keep dumping hazardous waste. And we're on the aquifer. Sladeville Water System is there. And with the salvaging of, with EPA salvaging the EPA site, the superfund sites, Sladeville now has a water supply where we don't need to have a filtering plant. It's still, with all the compromise that's been made to the aquifer, we still have a stable water supply. So that's my concern tonight is.
Muriel Hallard? Mrs. Hallard, five minutes? What, five minutes? Five minutes.
Well, I have to tell you, I didn't realize I was signing this to speak. I thought it was attendance. Oh, well. Anyway, I live at, I'm Muriel Hallard and I live at 62 Douglas Pike. And I don't believe I remember the blasting. We've been there, or I've been there, since 1971. And I don't remember all this blasting going on. It's fairly recent. So I don't know about the grandfather. Again, I was a member of that Protect Our Water Citizens Group and we did close those two sites. Took us three years. Western Sand and Gravel, and I live right there. And the landfill, they have approximately two and a half, they deposited approximately two and a half to three million gallons of hazardous waste. And what should we do with that? Why not put a site that we can blast? It's just unfathomable. It just makes no sense. I mean, at some point, it's gonna make the cracks in the bedrock, even though the server there was very, very good about explaining things. But I'd say nay, nay to the blasting. It looks as if they've had 70 years of use out of that piece of property. They've hauled out the sand, they've hauled out the gravel. And now they're holding out huge stones. I've seen them go right by the house. I guess they use for some kind of water eddy or, I don't know. But anyway, I say, stop the blasting.
Jim Wood? Okay, thank you. Janine, I can't read the last name, sorry. Is there a Janine Jolly? Five minutes.
Janine Jolly, 1563 Pound Hill Road. I just have something to show you.
Did you want to speak? Can I have someone else? Erica Millet?
I have questions for Mr. Grohl. All right. In your opinion, can you estimate any sort of useful life remaining for this quarry based on your expertise? Just a range, we're talking 20 years, 70 more years at the rate that it's being removed today?
I have no idea how long it would take because it's impossible to estimate that on any pit. It's, pits are driven by economics. People mine as long as the mining is economical, as long as there is a return on your investment in your effort. It would all depend on exactly from where they're at right now or the rate they're going. I couldn't even begin to fathom how long it would take.
And how much deeper could they potentially go and closer to the aquifer based on how deep they are now?
That's actually a question for Mr. Ferrari. I would not entertain that because I'm not the one that's surveilling the water table.
From a blasting perspective, you know, you're measuring north, southeast, and west. Is there any way to tell how deep the impact goes and what that impact is downward?
The impact downward is zero. As a matter of fact, they have to drill the holes about four feet deeper into the rock than they want the rock to break to accommodate for cratering. What happens is that the material at the bottom of the holes, the deepest in the rock, is the most confined and least weathered. Therefore, that material is most resistant to motion. Just to get the rock to break as deep as they want it to break on average, they have to do what's called subdrilling. So the effect of the rock, on the rock beneath the blast site is zero.
From a regulatory perspective, is there a limit to the depth and closeness that they could go to the top of the aquifer?
Again, that is a question for the groundwater hydrologist.
Okay. And since we're not in court, I think we can speculate a little. But what are some reasons in your experience that quarry sites have been closed down other than exhausting of the natural resources or going out of business?
Well, actually, all of the pits that I am involved in are pits that were operating when I showed up and they're still operating today. Eventually, I anticipate that all of them will eventually end what they're doing. But as far as what we currently are observing, the pits that are there continue to operate. And the reason they continue to operate is these are few and far between. It's not any rock that becomes pavement or anything else. You have to pass a very strict set of standards in the quality of rock that makes it economically worth producing. There are a lot of rocks that they would not bother blasting at all because the quality of the rock would not sustain the amount of money it would spend to drill, blast, and crush and transport the material.
Last question, are you familiar with the pooling of water in the north corner? And do you have an opinion on whether that's coming from a fracture in the rock? Or, I know the hydrologist has an opinion as well, but actually the condition of the rock in that area, has it been cracked through? Is it porous? What's happening there geologically?
That's as been granted. There is some fracturing in it. However, the material is not weeping out, so to speak, where I can see it. I go down and look at the walls and I don't see any water gushing out of the walls. Instead, that is runoff. It's a bare surface, ground surface. And when it rains, the water doesn't want to penetrate that into it because the material is, well, for all intents and purposes, artificially exposed as opposed to naturally exposed. Naturally exposed material absorbs moisture much more readily than artificially exposed material because the naturally exposed material has a development of a soil horizon over it that can absorb moisture. And rock tends not to absorb moisture and therefore it would tend to runoff and that's where it would end up.
So it's not coming out of the walls, it's either runoff. Have you inspected the rock at all underneath? Do you know if it's cracked or anything like that, just to address some of those?
Well, I can assure you that the rock under the pit is fractured. The rock extends several miles into the earth. It was several miles underground when it was formed. And as the rock was slowly brought to the surface, it cooled, contracted, and it cracked in regularly repeating patterns based upon the chemistry of the rock, the loading of the rock, and the disposition of the material around it.
Five minutes, and then we have three more, so if we can just finish up.
Okay. I have just direct questions tonight, I have direct answers. The first is, when that alarm goes off, when that alarm goes off before the blasting, where do the workers go?
The workers seal off the areas that anybody could gain access to the property. They stand at high points where they can see if anybody might be wandering into the site or around the site, both people, pets, anyone. They're looking to make sure that the site is clear. So they get back from the blast, and they stand and watch both the blast site and the surroundings so that they can do what's called site security.
You mentioned you have worked with maybe thirty some quarries locally or nearby?
Nine quarries.
Nine quarries, okay. Is your normal way of doing business, do they hire you, or does the state hire you sometimes? Is it as a quarry?
How I am brought in, this was kind of an organic process. I don't advertise, and I don't solicit business at all. People who happen to have used me for one job or another by word of mouth tell somebody else, and tells somebody else.
I read your report briefly as it passed my table, and it caught my eye that you said there was no standard for vibrations in soft earth materials, or the kind of material that covers the EPA patch?
That's correct. Those materials are simply resting on the ground surface at their own repose, and they design them that way so that the environment does not cause them to slump, slip, slide, or otherwise erode.
Did I read that there was no standard for that, but
No vibration.
Your best guess is that it's okay?
Right. The only way that you would damage those landfill caps is if you loaded a blast right next to them or in them, and you heaved the material around those caps, then you would damage the caps. You would have to blast them. Or you'd have to go in much more easily and just dig them loose with a machine.
One more question. This Jolly came up and showed the council something. Are you aware that she's the closest abutter to the quarry? And could you set up some kind of a dust collection in her yard when the blasts are gonna occur? Because that, to me, is one of the biggest issues, whether it's dust or water vapor. It's an interesting claim, and yet I've seen dust all over the place up there, and EPA wrote about, and DEM wrote about that dust.
Well, I set a seismograph there every time blasting at that end of the site. And I've set, the only time I don't set one there is if they're blasting at the opposite end of the site, which I didn't set one there on the last blast because I was still recovering from surgery, and the ground was a sheet of ice. So I went to the closest homes only, out of the abundance of caution for my personal safety.
Okay, well, I can empathize. But please consider putting a dust collector of some kind.
That issue will be addressed by the dust expert.
Rebecca DeChristophero, 1931 Pound Hill Road. I'm speaking as an abutter to the Pound Hill Road Quarry. My questions are for you, Mr. Grohl. So you mentioned that you've been an expert witness in regards to geology and blasting. Can you tell me, in your experience, or in your, you know, career as an expert witness, if you, what's the ratio between being an expert witness to businesses or residents who are filing structural claims against businesses?
Almost universally, businesses retain my services. I have worked for property owners in the past, but rarely do property owners solicit someone like myself. They might try to, but it's an expensive endeavor, and that's why residents don't typically do that.
Okay, thank you. I actually had a lot of questions, but the majority of residents and constituents asked them, so I'm just gonna scroll through them really quick. I've lived there since 2016, and I have definitely noticed over the last two years, just an increase in the frequency of blasting, the intensity of the blasting as well. Are you able to share with us any data, and even if it's just off the top of your head, regarding the change in blasting frequency and intensity, as well as maybe the structure, right? How much have they expanded, surface, rather, how much have they expanded maybe the surface of blasting over the last two years? I know that you had initially said that on average, it's about twelve blasts per year, but I've definitely seen an increase in the last two years, or maybe I've just noticed them a little bit more.
It's possible. Sometimes they occur in rapid succession. Sometimes there'll be a few blasts within a couple of weeks, if they have some kind of a contract or something where they have to produce the rock in accelerated manner. But on average, yes, it's, in the last twenty years, been about twelve blasts a year.
Okay. And then, do you have any data? I know that you said that you put seismograph meters on properties. Do you have any data to share that shows the increase of maybe intensity over the last two years? I know that you said it's below range, but
Yes, as they get closer, the vibrations, well, I can't say they've really gotten any higher in most directions. The, the distance between the pit and the surroundings is fairly broad. The nearest, there is one home that's within about 500 feet of where they're working, which is 1563. All of the other homes are over 1,000 feet away for the most part, except for when they work at the area that's to the west. Then there's a couple that might be within 600, 700 feet. But those are relatively small blasts in that, in that area. The big production blasts that they do in the back corner are over 1,000 feet from all but one home.
Okay, thank you. So again, I've lived there since 2016, and over the course of the last however many years, I'm not gonna do the math, I'm not terribly great at math. My, my house shakes. My house shakes starting at six o'clock in the morning, when they start up all of their machinery inside of the quarry walls, even, even though they're not supposed to start up their machinery until 7:00 AM. But my house constantly, constantly vibrates. It has gotten better over the last few years, but it constantly vibrates. So can you help me to understand why I feel more intense vibrations? I hear more intense sound, the blasting is more intense within the walls of my house? Can you help me to understand how scientifically that works?
Well, basically, the blast is
Not just blast, vibrations.
Oh, you mean machinery vibrations? Well, machinery vibrations are primarily felt further away, but at low amplitudes in sand, particularly moderately well-sorted sands that are unsaturated. That's where you, and if you're noticing more vibration at one point or another, it's probably due to some transient aspect of the, of the operation. They have various implements that have wheels on them, that they can reconfigure around to do whatever they need to do, whatever kind of processing they're doing.
Okay, I know that I only have five minutes, but that's a good segue to my next question. I actually have two more questions, but I'll segue to the other one. So you had mentioned, I know, you had mentioned transient noise, and as a result of them maybe coming closer to buffers and maybe taking down more trees, that that transient noise would essentially be enhanced?
Potentially. It all depends realistically on what intervenes between the source and the receiver. In this case, you have a regular topography that's comprised of sand, and that's relatively soft. And if you look at acoustic insulation, like what's in the ceiling, you'll notice that they have a texture to it, while the environment behaves the same way. The more rippled the ground surfaces, the more
Okay. So I guess we can say, sorry, in layperson's terms, so I guess we can say essentially the closer that the, that it gets to the property, the more transient noise?
Well, you could, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my very, very last question. So over the last two years, like I've mentioned, I have felt and seen an increase in quarrying, blasting, vibrations. I have also noticed that I have had significant leaks all throughout my roof. I have to put a pot and pan in a different location almost every rainstorm. So can you help me to understand how the impacts of blasting and ongoing, the ongoing impacts of vibrations in my house could potentially cause leaks in my roof, since I've seen an increase in the last two years?
Well, leaks in the roof are gonna be due to the natural disintegration of roofing products.
Nothing to do with blasting, okay? Okay, I think I'm at time. Kim, do you?
Okay, were there any more, anybody else? Yeah, okay. Nicole, five minutes. Nicole DeChristophero, 4 Green Street. I might telepathically have some of the questions from Rebecca's head, so. Now, you talked a little bit about the materials, so brick, ceramic, plaster, and lath, I think you mentioned, concrete. Over time, do those materials naturally degrade?
Yes, they do. They all do.
Okay, so with natural degradation, would the impact of the blasting that might not otherwise damage them, if it's a new structure, damage them if they're older structures?
No, and the reason being is that the, your mine study was performed on test structures that were on the path of an advancing coal mine. There were Oh, there were forty-seven structures that were in the advanced, path of an advancing surface coal mine, that they had eventually taken the material that the homes were sitting on. They instrumented each of these homes for ground response outside, on the closest side of the structure to the blast site, and also on the walls, ceilings, and floors. They meticulously recorded the size and location, width and length of cracks in all of the materials throughout all of these structures. They were all of varying ages and types of construction. They had everything from hundred-year-old, two-story farmhouses, to modern low-rise, single-family dwellings, ranches, splits, things like that. They even had mobile homes. And what they determined was that the limits that were established were based upon non-damage observations.
Okay, so you're saying that over time, these materials would degrade, but that blasting would not permeate those materials?
Blasting will still not accelerate the damage above and beyond.
All right, my next question is, who owns the seismographs that you place around the property?
I do.
Do you have to calibrate those?
Yes, annually.
Okay. And then, are those seismographs triggered if a certain percentage threshold is hit, or is it immediately with any blast that it triggers?
I set the threshold so that the ambient vibration from traffic, people walking by, things like that, won't trigger it.